All right, so we're gonna call this meeting to order on that note. So pledge of allegiance, we can all rise?
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic which stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Mr. Scott, could you call the roll?
Yes, Ms. Albright.
Here.
Mrs. Bell.
Here.
Mrs. Godfrey.
Here.
Mrs. Jarrett.
Here.
Mrs. Leoni.
Here.
Mrs. Oldson.
Here.
Mr. Scott, present. Mr. Strobel. And Mrs. Thompson.
Here.
Okay, so procedures for public participation. If you have a prepared statement to be read to the board, you could have a copy presented to me prior to the board being addressed. Comments on the agenda items can be made by rising, approaching the microphone, stating your name and address, and signing in on the sheet provided. You will be granted up to three minutes to address the board. Your three-minute time limit will start when you begin to speak. When your three minutes are over, you'll be asked to be seated. Any item that is not on the agenda, as well as agenda items acted upon, you can make comments at the designated section at the end of the agenda. And with that, announcements. We have no agenda edits. Okay, so there was an executive session that took place virtually on the first of February to discuss personnel. And there is going to be an executive session following this meeting to discuss potential litigation. And with that, I'm gonna toss this over to Luke Garringer to give the student board report. I'm sorry you're solo today, but take your light.
All right. So starting with the APC, academics, anticipation for the next year. Mr. Becker from the AIC visited the students to talk about the AIC. Extracurriculars, after school yoga sessions were held for the first time on Tuesday, February 1st. Cultural, students celebrated 100th Day of School last Thursday by dressing up as twenty year olds. For the AIC, academics, the elementary students are learning on their iPads and have fifteen minute daily math breaks outside. Staff are being coached on best practices of technology in the classroom. And additionally, they are overviewing the gifted and computer programs. Extracurricular, banning forced concerts for the fourth and fifth grade are coming up. Cultural, students are enjoying the learning experience. Middle school, academics, and tech ed, the tech ed students are learning hands-on coding with robots and in computer class that are coding on the computer. Extracurricular, student council is continuing to sell playgrounds in the school store during lunch every Friday. Cultural, the middle school is having a unity day with selection students to help improve the overall environment. And at the high school, academics and the classmen are beginning to choose their schedules for the 2022, 2023 school year. Extracurriculars, the charity C club has a new advisor, the college club has a new advisor. Clubs are becoming very active. Okay, the last year, if you might remember my report on the clubs on decline, this year we're seeing a lot more activity. And cultural, the student government is considering fun Friday spirit days that would take place more frequently than the spirit weeks that we have in the fall, winter, and spring. They'd be like more every Friday. The show is for the... And that's it.
All right, thank you. Any comments, questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Cooper.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to share with the board some amended information with regard to critical race theory or otherwise references CRT. That reference is a one-page document from the PA School Boards Association defining for local school boards what CRT is and what it is not to be confused with. CRT as defined by the reference one-page document, it's a framework for examining the efforts of race and racism in society. Being a theory, has been discussed in graduate-level higher education and legal circles since the seventies. Nineteen seventies, not as a curriculum, but as a point of discussion and analysis. Though originally focused on race, it has expanded to include the intersectional examination of the effects of other types of discrimination, such as those centered around gender, ethnicity, class, and disability in society. And is not to be confused with culturally responsive teaching and leadership practices. Through these practices, teachers and school leaders affirm and incorporate inclusively the diverse cultural references, identities, voices, experiences, and histories of all students and their families. The role of the local school board, as per PSBA, intimates that the core of public education system is based on local decision-making aimed to address the will and needs of the entire community as unpaid locally-elected public servants who, in their role as the governing body of a district, is dedicated to providing the best public education for every child in respective communities. Local Board of School Directors choose and adopt educational curriculum aligned with academic standards that are established and mandated by the Commonwealth's State Board of Education. The Daniel Boone Area School District Administration would not contemplate asking our Board of School Directors to adopt a curriculum built specifically around CRT. School districts under state and federal education laws are responsible for ensuring the factors arising from race, ethnicity, gender, class, disability, homelessness, and other circumstances do not limit any student's ability to access and benefit from district programs. Addressing barriers to opportunity that students may face, such as poverty, trauma, digital inequity, and discrimination, is supportive of this responsibility. The efforts of promoting equity, inclusion, and belonging are necessary to ensure that every child receives what they require to obtain a highly-quality education regardless of their race, ethnicity, economic circumstances, gender, disability, history of trauma, or other factors. The district does not teach CRT, however, remains confident that is our laser-learning community's desire for the district to deliver the very best education for every student in our community so that every child can succeed. The Board of School Directors approved laser-learning community district comprehensive plans' vision of learning together and advocating for all through engaging our district mission of taking pride in growing diverse learners in a safe environment with the goal of producing laser community graduates that are life-ready because they contribute to community, are resilient, readily advocate for self and others, and effectively communicate. In short, they care is a representation of our equity, inclusion, and belonging work through social-emotional learning, otherwise references SEL. SEL is in partnership with the research-based National School Climate Network, the Anti-Defamation League, No Place for Hate, the All Vase Bullying Prevention and Awareness Program, and Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports, otherwise references PBIS, which all look different at each one of our district buildings based on age-appropianness. This work under the leadership of Mr. Flowers and his role as Director of Community Relations and Equity Awareness fully supports our district vision and mission, our core or shared beliefs and values represented in our district's comprehensive plan, and is also being recognized by other Berks County school districts who are beginning to request permission to utilize resources that have been coalesced by Mr. Flowers. I will be sure to include the entire one-page PSBA document that I referenced in this report in my weekly update this Friday. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Cooper. Okay, so moving on to finance. Yeah, there'll be time for public comment at the end of every section because it's a committee in a hole. So, and so moving on to finance. We, any comments, questions, concerns on any of the finance items from the board? One thing I just wanted to say is that item 2A6, it's a donation that my husband and I are making to the school libraries, so I'll be abstaining from voting on that item when the time comes. Any, anything anyone wants to talk about? Anything, any public comment on finance items? Programs, just one thing, agreement with the BCIU. Any comments, questions, concerns from the board on that? Any public comment? Personnel, you have some retirements, leaves, appointments, salary updates for the, just corrections for extracurricular employees' stipends. Anything under personnel that the board would like to discuss? Any public comment? Okay, presentations by board members. Mr. Scott, secretary's correspondence?
I have nothing to report.
Okay. Mr. Jarrett, BCIU board report.
Just what is being, just what's being submitted for the...
Just that item? Okay. Do you know when your next meeting is?
Seventeenth of this month.
Okay. Okay.
That's separate from the call meeting, right?
Correct.
That was the 22nd, yeah. Okay. BCTC board report, Ms. Thompson? Or Ms. Godfrey?
I have a meeting on the 26th. There was a ceremony on 21th, I read, as well as board members, including Ms. Mandat. There was a presentation on their new course, which is the diversified occupation program, which allows students to obtain six credits for courses that aren't available at these facilities. For example, like veterinary, where they actually go out of the building and learn.
Okay.
And those are transferable to RAP. There was also a presentation on their budget, and then the next one is on March 23rd.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Godfrey? Okay, legislative report. Mr. Strobel isn't here, but as I said, he will not be able to attend the next legislative meeting, and Mr. Jarrett is attending in his place at the end of this month. Any other board reports for any appointments? Okay. Public comment on any of those presentations? Okay, enrollment numbers. There is a tallying error in the documentation that we have up here. We didn't realize it until this had already gone out. So by the time we vote, there will be an updated one. I think it's a second sheet. Is it the second sheet?
Second tab.
Second tab for headcount statistics that is just not tallying correctly. So we'll get that fixed by next month. I think it's double counting some kids. So any questions from the board on anything under enrollment? Any public comment? Curriculum and instruction, Ms. Albright.
It's me.
Oh, okay, that's right.
Oh, no. It is me. Our January meeting, we talked about the middle school rightsizing plan, and it was going through in great detail how, there was a math given about how the fifth and sixth graders would be kept separate from the seventh and eighth graders. And we also talked about the ninth and 10th grade actively learned program that's being used for in the English classes.
Okay. And next meeting is February 28th, and there is a time change. It's gonna start happening at 6:15.
Thanks for the spell, yes.
Yes, so that'll be going forward for the rest of the school year. Any questions from the board from Ms. Albright? Any public comment? Extracurricular, that's Ms. Bell.
Yes. So boys and girls bowling are going to be second place. They should be sending five students to the championships. They also have swimming that's going to the championships. They finish their season tomorrow, the regular season, the granding tomorrow. Wrestling, there will be approximately 10 new intersectionals at Governor Micklin and some two districts. Our middle school cheer team made it to the Coconos finale. They are ready to bid and competition with the Calabari and the Coconos. Our unified bocce is one-to-one right now. They had their first win this week against Rainewine. And the state qualifier for bocce will be held here at Daniel Boone on March 8th. And then we're gonna start the spring sport, so.
Okay, and I forgot to say something earlier. It wasn't discussed at today's extracurricular meeting, but it is an extracurricular item. Our TSA kids had their regional competition this past Saturday. I don't remember where it is. And...
It was Strasburg.
Strasburg, okay. And the middle school and high school kids competed, and we had, I think, 20 kids at the high school, maybe 20 qualifying events at the high school to go on to states, and I think it was closer to 35 at the middle school. We always have a little bit more participation at the middle school, but they did great. TSA is an awesome program, so good luck to them at states in March, probably March, April, in seven springs. Any questions for Ms. Bell on the extracurricular meeting? Any public comments? Facilities and transportation is supposed to be Mr. Strobel, but it's me because he's not here. So we just had that meeting today, and I can't read my own notes. So we had an extensive discussion about HVAC issues, most of them at the middle school and the high school. We're receiving quotes for replacement items. There are two rooms in the school district that actually need some significant repairs and replacements because the rooms don't have any heat at all. And so those teachers and kids have been moved to alternate rooms, but we need to replace the equipment so that, you know, they might actually be above 50 degrees in there. And we are also receiving proposals for compressor replacement at the middle school. The rest of the stuff that we talked about, we are trying to just make use with replacement equipment. There is a meeting set up with Berks Mechanical and Trane who provide our maintenance and equipment for most of the HVAC systems in the school district. And we are going to be trying to set up a repair and replacement priority list for the next several years so we can have a better understanding of how to budget those items going forward. So we had an update on the library. So just to recap, we had a significant flood from failure of heating equipment at the library October.
It was before school.
Before school started. And so a restore card was recommended by our insurance adjuster to come in and help us do the work to fix what could be repaired in the building, all the stuff that was water damaged. So they began boxing things up last week. The mechanical issues with the heating system, they've included water sensors to prevent a recurrence of the issue. So now when the water sensor senses that there's water where there shouldn't be water, it'll shut the water off, so that won't happen again. We have some life safety issues. There have been, several reports have come to us. Our insurance company recommended several things that we needed to do. Bleacher repairs, playground equipment repairs, kitchen equipment repairs, stage lighting and rigging at the high school, and fire alarm repairs. We're making progress in all of that. We had a discussion about the retaining wall at the intermediate center. It is, we, last year we asked for, the board directed the administration to get a report with recommendations. That was just provided to the operations department within the last two weeks. And they're working through what those recommendations are. They're gonna come to us with some recommendations for how we're gonna go forward with that. Transportation proposal is gonna be going out within the week for transportation services for the next three years?
Five.
For the next five years. We discussed behavioral issues on the buses. We're gonna get some forward motion on dealing with some of those, and they will discuss that at the next meeting. Snow removal and disinfection that's been happening. Our facilities director just wanted to give a shout-out to Culture Landscaping and SEC that they're doing a good job. And our next meeting will be March 14th. And does anybody have any questions for me? Any public comment?
I'm just curious, which library was it?
The high school. Yeah. So any other public comment? Okay. Finance committee, oh, that's me too. So we, January 24th was our finance committee meeting. One of the things we discussed was the accounts payable processing rebate program with POM data. That was, that is actually part of the finance, one of the finance items for this, on this committee to hold, agenda. So we'll be, the system should pay for itself and then some with the rebates we get back. And it was voted out of committee to be recommended to the whole board. Lancaster-Levinian Intermediate Unit, Act 168 processing, that item is also on this agenda to be voted on at the next meeting. We set a date for the budget workshop, 9th of March, 6:30. I encourage everybody to come and listen to the highly detailed discussion of where all of our money goes every year. And the last item that we discussed was Act 80 processing by Burke 1. We voted at the January 24th meeting to use that company, so that item was already voted on at the previous meeting. And our next finance committee meeting is January 28th. Our next, as I said, the budget workshop meeting is March 8th. Any questions for me?
February.
What did I say?
January.
Oh, February 28th, which is in the future, which is the way it should be. And so, any questions for me? Any public comment on finance? Policy review, that's Mr. Scott.
So we had our meeting this evening also at 5:30. We basically reviewed our five policies, and our next meeting will be March 14th. If anyone has any questions on the policies, I'd be glad to turn the answer that way.
So the second reading, I gotta turn on my mic. I'm not laughing, I am really. But second reading policies are listed there. Any questions for Mr. Scott or Mr. Harley about any of those items? Any public comment? Moving on to technology. Oh, and Mr. Strobel isn't here, and I don't know what we discussed. I was on that meeting too. So give me one second to pull that agenda up. I didn't know there was gonna be a test. All right. Is it there? Yeah, there it is. All right, we got an update on infrastructure planning for 22, 23. It's coming in a little bit under budget, which we always like. The, there was no update on the student information system. Multi-factor authentication, our insurance company is requesting, very strongly requesting that we set up multi-factor authentication for getting into email systems. So we have to do it. We haven't done it up until this point, so it's going to happen, and he is trying to pick a company to bring forward to us to recommend. Hopefully, he hopes to have that by next board meeting. And that was, that was it, unless you can think of something else that was discussed that's really important to highlight.
Nope.
Any questions about that? I know, I really was there and I did listen. I didn't think I had to give a report. So next meeting date is February 28th. Any questions from the board? Any public comment? Old business. Moving on to approval of the minutes from last meeting. Any questions from the board on that? Any public comment? New business, we got none.
Can I bring someone up in new business?
Sure.
Thank you. So I know that it's been brought up a lot about contact tracing and some of the concerns that even board members have had. As we're seeing these numbers go down, I know there are other school districts around us that are actually eliminating contact tracing.
Yeah.
And the reason they're doing that is because we're not contact tracing at home, we're just contact tracing at school. There is actually really no reason to be contact tracing at school. If you're sick, stay home. If somebody, if we're not contact tracing at home and they're sick and they come in, it's already too late. So there is absolutely zero point of contact tracing at this point with the numbers as low as they are. And I wanted to have a board discussion.
Okay. This is the first week that I've seen that the numbers have felt to me to be manageable and for the number of cases that we've had in the school building. Or, you know, hopefully not in the school building, hopefully just kids at home, you know, until they're well enough to come back to school. I personally don't feel that I'm ready to make a significant change, not knowing what, if there is gonna be a next wave. I just don't feel comfortable...
But if we sit here and say, what if, what if, what if, what if, what if? We're never...
But we got one week of good data.
I understand.
Now, I'm not saying that...
But I wanna sit here and say what if for the rest of our lives.
Absolutely.
We'll never leave the place that we're at right now.
And that is, that is a valid concern. I just, I just don't, I'm not, I personally am not ready to vote to make a change to the contact tracing requirement after one week of feeling like I can breathe a sigh of relief that we don't have as many children and teachers out sick. I don't...
Look, and I...
And if I saw something, if I saw things changing, if I saw things changing, if I saw a steady state or even a decrease would be better in two weeks, I might feel differently. But after one variety of good data, I don't know if I'm ready to have that discussion. I would like to know what other people on the board feel.
Vigo. I'm in agreement with Jen.
Okay.
I brought this up when we were in executive session last time. I don't really see the point if you're not contact tracing. I don't know what you're really accomplishing here. I respect your wanting a little more data, but I think we need to push that discussion forward sooner. but I think we need to push that discussion forward soon.
Anyone else?
Julie, I agree with you just at the moment, just at the moment. I think this board is pretty open. We've always been open as far as making some changes, but it's kind of like early, very early. Maybe perhaps we can talk about this at the next meeting within two weeks. I mean, you look at Philadelphia, which is different than us, but they're, you know, they're putting on like two masks and, I mean, I get it, I get it. It's probably getting better, but. At 95, tomorrow.
Anyone else?
I'm, I'm with doing away with the contact tracing.
Can we have it on the next meeting?
I'd just like to hear, I mean, you asked, you asked to have a discussion, so let's, yeah, go ahead.
I just want to know how stepping, how, how many staff members, I mean, the percentage of staff, how, every?
Oh.
Personally, I want to know that for me, it's that, or something like that. My kids just still get to school if you have a staff.
Right.
I personally, and for whatever keeps my kids in school.
Right. Do you have any, are you still kind of thinking about it? Oh, I didn't hear what you said.
I agree. Mrs. Miami.
Okay.
I think the numbers are going to continue to go down.
And I hope that's true.
And at this point, you know, I've dealt with contact tracing with all of my children several times.
Now, my understanding is that if a student has a positive case at home, they are asked to quarantine. Now, I know that they're not being, I know they're not being contact traced through like any sports outside of school that they're taking part in or through church groups or anything like that. But if their, if their family members are positive, the kid is supposed to be quarantined. So, I guess I don't understand, and we've never gone to the, gone to the extent of, of quarantining based on things they're having at school.
What I'm saying is if somebody has positive at home, that, you know, we're not contact tracing every single person they've come back in contact with in the community.
Correct. But we are, but we are, but we are contact tracing their household.
We are.
We are?
Your contact input.
If they didn't just send them, I thought they were allowed to come in.
If they're vaccinated. Am I wrong?
No. The school district, we contact trace for the schools. That's what we do.
Right.
That is the extent of it. We cannot contact trace from the community itself. Correct, that's what we discussed at the last executive.
So, all I'm explaining is that, that really, that doesn't make any sense to contact.
Go around anybody in contact.
We're not contact tracing that community. That's all.
Right.
And I feel like our children are losing the education they need because they're, they're, they're losing more days. I know for a fact, like, there are, there have been so many missed days by kids. And we're trying to keep them in school, but what we're doing right now with contact tracing is actually keeping more kids out of school that are healthy than keeping kids in school.
So, what I'm thinking is.
Can I just say, and I'm, I'm trying to be, I swear I'm trying to be super respectful. If you guys could just wait and comment, because I can't hear what you're saying and you're missing what we're saying. Like, just, I want to make sure we both hear each other.
Thank you. So, what I'd like to do then, if the board is agreeable to it, since my, my opinion is that I would just like to, I would just like a little bit more data. And it sounded like Mr. Scott agreed with that. How about if we put it on the next voting, instances in the voting meeting anyway? But, so how about we put it on the next voting meeting and we should have two more weeks of data?
Yes, I would appreciate it.
Does that sound reasonable?
Do you want that under new business?
Yeah. I think that, I think that's fair.
Thank you, Julie.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Especially since we're not voting tonight.
Right.
Couldn't make that change.
We could, but, but Mr., our, our, our attorney would.
Would not be happy.
Would not be happy with me. But I could still do it. But, yeah, okay. So, so, so we'll go ahead and put that on the agenda for next meeting, which is the 28th. Okay. Okay. All right. So, all right. Any, any other comments on the new business that we just discussed from the board? Any public comment on that? Come on, that's so last year. It's a new year.
First of all, I'd like to say it is lovely to see all of your faces. If I may need to say that, it's been lovely to see all of your beautiful faces. I do have a question before I get started. Yes, yes. When you all go out and you're sitting here virtually sleeping with your mask on, do you wear a mask and do your kids wear masks while you're around the color?
Yes.
So.
He does.
He does. Okay. So, on January 21st, I got a wrote a call that my son was exposed. I called the school and asked why are healthy children being made to quarantine? Her response was that we only have to notify you of exposure and nothing else. My response was good because my son will be in school on Monday. He went to school on Monday and that was the last we heard of the supposed exposure. So, I'm going to read just a brief Facebook page message here. I'm so upset right now. Thanks to the leaping COVID and close contact, we can now not see our son perform in his bar speeding concert. He has to stay out of school and be virtual until Thursday. I'm so tired of this. So, last Sunday, after she posted this, I went over to her house. I had her call the nurse and I laid into the nurse, asking again, why are you making healthy children quarantine? She gave me the, well, 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 I'm following orders from the school and the CDC. I reminded her of the nerve burn trials and that she was being complicit of child abuse. I told the nurse that my friend's son would be in school in the morning. Her son went to school and they sent him home. Guess what? He never got sick. So, there was a Facebook post from AIC about the concert. And my response was the kids worked hard for the concert, but it's a shame that not all students could participate that wanted to participate because of so-called exposure. Another account responded, agreed. My son was pretty disappointed, wasn't allowed to be there even though he's not sick at all. He tried doing it via Zoom, but he said it was awful and left. Why are all four schools treating contact, contact tracing all in different ways? Why is the school district not consistent? Why do you have contact tracing at all? At this point, the virus has gone through the school like a stomach virus. Why do you allow students that are vaccinated to not have to quarantine, but the unvaccs do? How is that not discrimination? Do you realize the vaccination to get the virus too? I think some people had it. Parents who attend school board meetings have commented that their children have been targeted for supposed exposure. How is that not discrimination? Both teachers and students are blaming students that don't wear a mask. How is that not discrimination? All we are asking that you is that you do away with the contact tracing. How many children are struggling with virtual learning because of contact tracing? How many children are missing out on such important events like their first concert or being seen at a sporting event by college recruiters?
Correct.
How many children are depressed using drugs, contemplating suicide because of what you're doing to them? How many children are not getting fed because you feel the need to ostracize them because they ate lunch next to someone? And school is where they get most of their meals. And do you know that no healthy children died from this cold?
Thank you.
Oh, and you know, here.
Thank you. And just a reminder, if, if you, if your time is up, if, if you have a written, if you have a written document that you want to hand in and you run out of time, it will still, the whole thing will be published in the, in the agenda, so everyone will get to see it. Or, if you have somebody who's willing to read it for you, you can hand it off to somebody and let them read the rest of it. You can, those are just two ways to handle it so that it's fair. Everybody gets their free minutes. Okay. Any, helps if I leave the mic on. Anyone else like to comment under new business?
So, this is my letter from last week.
Okay.
And that's my new letter.
Okay.
Okay, I'm here tonight because you never responded to my question that I asked two weeks ago. I want to know why you disregarded my son's doctor's note on the instructions of Mrs. Evelyn, the school nurse. The only thing posted on the public comments was regarding the CDC guidelines. That was not the question I asked. My letter to the board is not answered and that's why I'm here tonight. Mrs. Evelyn, the school nurse, called to tell us about my son Nolan Brown possibly was contacted exposed. She told me that no one can return to school with a doctor's note since he was exposed and had his vaccination. My pediatrician at Redding Pediatrics advised me to call a virtual doctor in their network for clearance for him to return to school. The doctors stated that there is no reason why no one is unable to go to school or attend wrestling. Mrs. Evelyn called me to tell me the doctor's note was not sufficient. I then spoke directly to Mr. Sogen and my husband spoke to Mr. Hurley about this issue. They both also denied my doctor's note. How does a school nurse clear, how? How does a school nurse and a school district employee override a doctor's note, clearing a healthy school son to return to school and wrestling? How do Dandrew Room employees have the authority to not honor a doctor's note? My son was healthy and cleared by a doctor without any restrictions to return. I will reiterate that contact tracing needs to stop. It is a waste of time and resources. It is pulling healthy students out of the school and preventing them from learning properly and participating in extracurricular activities such as my son Nolan Brown. If Dandrew Room is going to contact trace and follow these CDC guidelines, they cannot pick and choose which guidelines they are adhered to follow. The way the district is handling COVID is a disgrace to the entire student body. I will look forward to your correspondence to my, my question. Also, I'm a teacher for the Redding School District and we do not contact trace. We have twice as many in the population as Dandrew. We live in communities, small cities, and I just don't understand. I'd be more than happy to share, to, to work on your committee.
Thank you. I just wanted to, I just wanted to say, and I'm sorry that I did not reach. I did look to see if your previous letter had an email or phone number attached to it and it did not. I, the reason that we didn't address some of those very specific issues in our report at the end of the month, at the end of the week was because they were about a specific student and a specific item. You know, and, and, you know, I apologize that I didn't communicate that to you. If by the end of this meeting, or if you want to do it now, if you want to put your email on here, I can respond to you directly.
I just, that was my other thing, that if you wanted to personally not, you know, do that, but.
I mean, you want to share what I say, you know, your vote totally will.
And I understand why, because it is.
Yeah, but that's why I didn't respond, because I couldn't find you after the meeting. And I just wanted you to know that I wasn't trying to avoid answering. But, but if you want to stick around at the end, we can, we can chat and then we'll, we'll figure something out so we can have a discussion.
And that's mine, but also I sent a student here.
Absolutely, I know he was here and, but by the end of the meeting.
You could always look me up through my student records.
Yeah. And, well, I don't have access to those. You know, so, yeah. Yeah, a lot of people think that we as school board members have access to a lot of information and, you know.
We don't.
That we don't. And for good reason. Thank you so much.
This is me. I'm a teacher, as I said, so during the day.
We can, yeah, I got it. And I work during the day, so I might reach out. So, thank you very much. Okay. Thank you. Anyone else want to comment on a new business? We will be getting to a general one that's for anything that wasn't on the agenda if, if you have something for that. So, just want you to let me know that that is coming.
My name is Jim DeCray. I emailed Mr. Scaboria last week in regards to my son wishing to go virtual for the rest of this year. He has said, I'm happy at the school, the high school this school year. For the first half of the year, he had numerous flex periods, study halls and free time due to a schedule or teachers that were not in the school. The masks were also a big issue as he does not want to wear a mask because they are uncomfortable and they make him anxious. We do not want our children wearing masks as they are not only ineffective, they are dangerous to their health and development. Since the mask mandate has been lifted, he has said it is better. My daughter is scared to not wear a mask because if she gets contact traced, she can miss out on being in school and participating in activities during her senior year. We've done as much as we can as parents to try to keep our children engaged and excited about school, but it is difficult. The contact tracing policy makes no sense. My son was contact traced on Monday afternoon at 1:30 PM from a contact that he had the previous Thursday. He showed no symptoms and was in good health. Because he was not vaccinated, he had to go home but could return the next day if he wore a mask for the next week. He said he cannot stay wearing a mask, so he chose to stay home. That was, the, that was the same time period that he expressed his wish to go virtual as he's sick of this nonsense. What happened the days, what happened to those days when, when you stayed home if you were sick but attended school if you were healthy, even when you had the flu, which COVID is, was prevalent? Mr. Scaboria has said in his response to my request for my son to go virtual, we encourage all healthy students to attend school in person. Does that mean as long as you do not sit next to someone that is sick even though they show no symptoms and you got an experimental injection? We, we need to stop these insane policies. Keep the masks optional, stop the contact tracing and do not bring the vaccine mandates. My children would not be getting the COVID vaccine as it has not been thoroughly tested and the possible effects of it are not worth the lack of protection they provide. With a vaccine, you can still catch, spread and die from COVID. You can also develop blood clots, Yellmire syndrome, myocarditis and pericarditis, which is most prevalent in teenage boys like my son, and you can possibly die. I'm not willing to gamble my children's health for something that is very survivability. I want it on the record that I do not consent to having my children vaccinated with the COVID vaccine, 19 vaccine now or ever.
Anyone else?
I think there are a public.
My name is Jenny. I just want to talk about contact tracing like everybody else did. I don't want to see it here anymore. I think it's, just like a lot of other schools are doing away with the contact tracing. I know you guys want to see numbers going down, but what kind of games are we going to keep playing? You know what I mean? Just like before, let's just talk about masks. You guys are brave enough to start the school year mask optional. And all of a sudden, you got scared and you went back to mask mandates. You know, so what's going to, when this is ever to end? COVID is not ever, 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 ever going away, ever. It's just going to be like the flu, it's going to be a regular thing. And it depends, all that's going to matter is how the news or wherever you get the information gets to the people. Let's put the fear in them, to give them that, you know, that fear, excuse me, that makes people change their minds. The contact tracing, I think, is just, you know, a way to get kids out of school. People are still going to get sick. I guess my question always was is that, I don't know if we kept documenting numbers of when people were sick before COVID happened. You know, I mean, what were the numbers looking like then compared to now? I mean, how much of the difference is there actually? You know, because I'm guessing there was no doubt if you were sick, you just stayed home. That's, you know, you didn't feel well, you stayed home. But nowadays, like this big deal. We can't cough at work, we can't sneeze at work. God forbid we cough and sneeze at work. You look like you're, you know, something's seriously wrong with you. I mean, I just tell people I have a heavy cough, you know what I mean? Because I'm coughing at work all the time and they think that I freaking COVID and I spread something to them. But like I said, I just want to go back to normal. But like I said, I just want to go back to normal. I know people are going to be afraid of it, but these things are just affecting everybody's lives, so people have to get on with it and understand that this is, you know, I'm sure all of us have gotten COVID this year in some form, you know? Maybe people didn't have it sick last year, but I had it and I'm like, wait a minute, I haven't been sick before. Okay, so, I mean, I just, like I said, I just want to see contact tracing go away and I respect your decision with the two weeks, because again, it's not a booing game, but at least it's been on the books. But again, we've got to make decisions and keep with our decisions and not flip-flop back and forth, you know? I bring up, you know, like the NFL, they can make up their own rules now, they don't have to do anything, because Super Bowl, it's, it's ridiculous what it is. Everybody can make up their own rules, you know what I mean? So I just think that we should do it with the contact tracing, you know what I mean? Just let's get back to normal, let's pretend, you know, it's just, you know, the flu. Okay, thank you very much.
Anyone else? Okay, on, do you want to, do you want to give a presentation on, on contact tracing? Or just let me say that we can.
I'm not sure where I.
So, so if, if no one else other than you wants to talk about contact tracing, then, we'll just move on to presentations on any, any agenda items and you can come on back. No, not, that's what we're doing, so come on back. We're just.
Bob Markle, Berber. Dr. Cooper, you mentioned that CRT is not being taught at Daniel Boone. And I, I do know it's not an actual curriculum course, but you did say that SEL is part, is being taught in Daniel Boone, is that correct?
It's part of our programming, social emotional learning.
Okay. Social emotional learning is a rebranding of CRT. It is CRT.
I'm not going to sit here and have a dialogue back and forth.
The framework of CRT being taught in the schools is social emotional learning. Both of which, CRT and social emotional learning, push equity instead of equality, push social justice and microaggressions. All these are Marxist ideology that has no place in our schools. CRT gets a bad name, it deserves, therefore it is rebranded as SEL. Equity is, equality is treated equally, equity is social engineering. There is a difference, they sound the same, they're not the same. And SEL is pushing equity instead of equality. Money should not be spent on this indoctrination, indoctrination poison and should remain in core academic classes. I really wasn't prepared to speak about this, so that's all I have. I'll be doing a lot more research on this and we'll bring it up in future meetings. Thank you.
Thank you.
How much do you get paid for teaching CRT and saying that it's not? I'm looking at media.
My name is Valerie. My family came into this country in 1961. My grandmother is a Spaniard. She was considered, I guess, a white woman on the island of Dominican Republic. My grandfather was an African man who was part of the region. And they came into this country not knowing the lick of English, being biracial, having biracial children. And my grandmother would bake cakes and sell Avon, and my grandfather was a janitor. So naturally, my family really didn't have any money. So my dad told me a story, which is what I'm going to share with you. My dad was three years old when he came to this country, and because he was in preschool at Holy Name, he learned to speak English and he often was a translator for my grandparents. My grandmother told my grandfather, "Sadio, go down to the corner, they're giving out free cheese and milk, we could use that for the family." So my grandfather naturally takes my dad and he says, "You've got to come with me, you have to translate." So my dad goes down, waits in line, and he signs up and he, or he walks up to the guy and the guy says, "Do you have, are you, do you have welfare?" And my grandmother didn't understand what that was. My dad translated, he said, "Fill out this paper, we'll see if you're eligible." My grandfather only had a third grade education, could barely even read, so my dad had to read for him. And my grandfather thought that if he showed that he worked hard enough, that they would, they would honor his efforts and bless him with free food. Well, my grandparents told them all the side jobs that he did just to raise money for the family, and they denied him because he made too much money. And my grandfather took my dad and he went across the street and he said, "My dad's name is Sergio, Sadio Mina. All these people waiting in line, they don't work, they don't do anything." He said, "The family's probably been in this country for years, but if that was me, I'd be a millionaire." He said, "We will never be those people," is what he told my dad. And when my dad had, me, my sister, my cousins, we were always raised and told that we could be anything. Women at the time were frowned upon, but my dad told me, "Men will shatter in their boots when they hear you because you will be someone of, a woman with education." I'm the first woman in my family to have a master's degree. My family never, never put me in a position or placed me, even though we were from poverty, never told me how oppressed I was, and that's the only way I'm going to make it in this country. They told me I could be anything and I could be in this country. I truly believe that CRT is pushing ideology that's going to degrade people like me that come from my background. My grandfather is black, my mom is black, we are Haitian, African descent. I've experienced racism from both Hispanics, white, black people, Asian people, I don't even know where I fit on a scale, to be honest with you. So I truly believe that racism should be taught, but not under the guise of CRT. That's it. Thank you.
This is Justin Tool right now. I'm Danielle with AMI, and I have been told about the recent concerts that have kids being secluded or having to participate virtually, which is a joke. You're taking these kids harder in time and for some kids, they're hard away from what they worked so hard for. I don't know the specifics 100%, I will be honest. So my kids are way too young to be in music classes right now. But from what I have been told is that in, as far as the last concert for music with instruments, that kids had to wear masks or had some sort of cloth covering over their mouthpiece. So this being a flute, sorry. Okay? If I take a kid's cloth. Where? How, how is that making a noise? So if it's about whether it was the music teacher or the conductor or the band director, whichever it is, having their personal opinion telling that their students had to wear masks or had to put some sort of covering over the hole of their instruments, reed instruments, their reeds have to be wet, requires direct mouth contact. Brass con, brass instruments also still require air because you have to buzz your lips. But yet, when it comes to sports, wrestling, basketball, close contact sports, they don't have to do that, and usually in music, we are about the same distance in chairs. And this is coming from 15 years ago when I was in high school. Dr. Cooper, where are your time? Okay? Now, on the separate topic is, I was not here two weeks ago. Four weeks ago, Mrs. Albright, I appreciated you have, bringing our, the board meeting to have like an actual discussion when some of us parents spoke, rather than being so informally excused by saying, "Refer to the website." Doesn't make us feel like you're taking us seriously? This is not customer service where you say, "Refer to our website." This is higher than a public service. These are our kids, not to be taken lightly, and yet we're not taken seriously. So I think things need to change and we need to make this more of an actual public forum and have discussions. Because that actually made more of a difference four weeks ago than what's going on again with, with past. We need to have discussions.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Caroline Cray. I wanted to discuss TikTok. I received emails and correspondence from Daniel Boone regarding numerous things that happen with the schools and in the Blazer community, and I do appreciate the communications. On February 2nd, I received an email from the No Reply School G email regarding a TikTok contest for the high school, which read, "Don't forget to submit your TikTok to Blazin' Media TikTok Contest. All TikToks must be school appropriate and must be original creation if considered. Weekly winners will be featured during March 19th Film Festival and legendary prizes and unspeakable glory could be yours today." I was disturbed that Daniel Boone High School approved the use of TikTok for student contests. I remembered there were several emails sent out by Aaron Sorbitz directly to the Blazer parents in early fall of 2021 regarding social media concerns regarding TikTok challenges. The first email received was on 9/14/2021 at 2:44 PM and in summary, it read, "Concerning posts on social media was received and that was investigated by the PAC police and concluded that there was no threat." TikTok was not mentioned in that email, however, later that same evening, another email was received and in summary, it read, it came in around 7:05. Reports of vandalism were occurring in bathrooms at TB High School. Damages in some bathrooms were significant and require closing until repairs can be completed. We've come to understand that this is part of a social media challenge on TikTok, known as a tedious licks. A third email was also received to parents on October 1st at about 11:01 AM and it read, "A list of disturbing challenges again been received. We're taking the possibility of additional TikTok challenges very seriously. The list contains very concerning actions and behaviors, but a list of disturbing actions and behaviors was not provided to parents, but I can only imagine what they were after I looked into TikTok." TikTok is a very toxic social media platform and promotes swearing, sexual contact, inappropriate dance moves, almost naked girls, body shaming, cyberbullying, and contact with strangers. There are many more disturbing issues of which I find personally offensive because they don't get to my religious beliefs, but I won't go into those issues. Many TikTok challenges have resulted in death, injury, house fires, and other disturbing behaviors. Just to mention a few, TikTok internal documents uncovered by The Intercept have also shown that they censor users who are ugly, poor, and stable. That does not fit the Blazer rules of be safe, be kind, be respectful, be responsible, and be positive. I would beg, there are many parents like my husband and myself that told their kids they are not to be on that social platform after what happened in the high school. I think Daniel Boone could choose another outlet for the students to participate in the contest. The school is sending out a very confusing message to both parents and students. The platform is not okay and should not be promoted anyway. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else?
I just have a bunch of questions. I'm going to follow up again here tomorrow. Hopebirds grow, Hope Street Birds grow. Can we have a discussion, like if you don't get it, about the CRT and to educate how damaging this is toward kids? If there are a way to have a discussion about this where you're all like, you got the news and, you know, you don't let us talk and, and like someone said, you just say, "Refer to the website." And have a dialogue about it.
This section, this part of the meeting is, is not a Q and A. It's for you guys to talk to us about, I know that, you know.
One of the best meetings we.
I know that people. I know that people in this school district have reached out to you to discuss this. I, I don't, I, I understand that, I don't, that maybe, I don't, actually, I don't understand because this particular issue, I know that people have reached out to you to discuss it. It wasn't me.
I have the other brain and I'm saying what you're teaching is wrong and you're denying that you're teaching it.
And I understand that that's how you feel, but I, I just.
Honestly, if I was fired.
There's a point where, there's a point where there, where we can have dialogue. I feel like we haven't, we haven't reached that point, you and I, about this issue because you and I don't agree at all on this issue. And that is, you're right, you know, absolutely, but we're not having this discussion because we're not, we're not teaching CRT. Our, our, our certain.
It's embedded in this curriculum though.
As again, and again, this is, this, this dialogue is not.
After what you said earlier.
This dialogue is not productive and that's why we're not, that's why it's for you to tell us how us, how you feel.
Have a dialogue. Do you remember, it was like November, I said, "Can we talk?" And we had, you let us all come up, you answered questions about the mask. That's all I'm asking.
I appreciate your time.
Right? Doing your job as usual.
I would like to say that the insults do not help your cause. So when you sit there and you say things to our superintendent or to our president or call the rest of our teams, I think it broke off their back truthfully, but that doesn't really open my desire. I, it doesn't open my desire to have a dialogue with you because when someone's insulting me, I'm not, I'm going to close myself off.
That's fine, I don't have to be a part of it, let's have other, you know, just happen.
Well, I would recommend a different approach.
Do we have anybody else who'd like to make a comment?
My name is Jenny, Abby, Kelly, Jen. I was called for today with the SEL. You know, that's something that I was going to, you know, these are like the three things that I, I have to give in my heart. And I don't have anything as far as anything written up or any information to give about it. But I think what, at least from my perspective, is that let's use SEL, social, emotional learning, you know what I mean? I take the word emotion, you know what I mean? Social and emotional. So I say if kids say that they want to be a fly, then you can be a fly. I'm just, you know, using, I'm being a little sarcastic here, you know, because I know that I've got children in fourth grade and seventh grade. And the stuff that I hear my seventh grader talk about as far as the sexuality stuff that they talk about or other different sexualities that my daughter's friends are, you know what I mean? I'm good at that, but don't, you know, it's almost like he's talking about it, is it really true? It just sounds really weird how people, how children think, you know? I know when I was a kid, I don't think my parents knew what the hell I was doing. Geez, I'd be in deep trouble, you know what I mean? And I don't know how many parents know what's going on with their children or their children talk to them about things like that. Kids or children shouldn't be making any decisions until they're 18 years of age. But today's society is allowing children to do whatever they want and the parents are almost not allowed to have a say. I'm not talking about the school, just saying in general, you know, the way things are turning, kids are still in their parents or at least that younger and waiting in the keys and all this weird stuff. But I just, you know, I'm going to do more research about. But I just, you know, I'm going to do more research about this social-emotional learning thing and I, you know, bring more information to it, that it is, it is CRT, it's just a different way of saying, it's almost like taking a platter, this shiny nice platter, it's, you know what I mean, and saying, "This is SEL," you know what I mean? But it's, you know what I mean, this nice platter, but it's actually a, you know, a term, which is CRT. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else like to make a comment? Okay. Thank you.